You know, just some news.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the October first meeting of the Westerly School Committee. Members present Angela Gothles, Joe Jackson, Mike Ober, myself, Tim Killam, Peter Nero and Lori Weichall. Mr. Nero, could you read us some of the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. And Mr. Ober, could you read our mission statement?
Yes. To create an inspiring, challenging and supportive environment where students are encouraged and assisted in reaching their highest potential.
Thank you. And first up, we have our students' report.
Hello. All right. September has been a month full of exciting news and events for WHS students and faculty alike. And as we transition into October and the halfway point of quarter one, there's lots to reflect on and also to look forward to. First off, the WHS stage dogs have kicked off their planning for productions happening during the school year. Auditions for a compilation of one act plays are being held on October 27th at 2:15 at the Granite Theater. The show will take place on Saturday, January 31st at 7:00 PM. Similarly, auditions for Chicago Teen Edition will take place on October 28th at 2:30 PM at the Babcock Auditorium. The show will be held on March 6th and March 8th. Finally, the student-run production named Title of Play is in the works and they are planning to launch it on November 21st through 23rd in Babcock Hall. We're all looking forward to more amazing performances from our student actors this year. On the athletic side, the football team is currently standing with two wins and two losses. Their next game is home this Friday against Woonsocket at 7:00 PM. The theme for the game is Pinkout in support of breast cancer awareness. And I can say you can expect big things from the Dog Pound at this game. Boys soccer currently has four wins, six losses and one tie. Their next game will be away against Lincoln on the fourth. The girls soccer team has seven wins, four losses and one tie. They are also playing Moses Brown tonight for their senior night. The girls volleyball team is having a very impressive season, competing with a nine-win and zero-loss undefeated record. I'd like to recognize that this is an extremely hard feat as they have continuously faced difficult opponents. Among the players, junior Allison Miranda was nominated as Providence Journal's Player of the Week. Voting is still in progress, so be sure to visit the page and show your support. Their next game will be away against Prow on the sixth. Girls tennis is currently two wins and three losses with another match taking place today. These games have also consistently displayed immense talent and competition. The fundraiser for seniors at Mel's Downtown Creamery was a great success and it was great to see all the community come together. We thank everyone who helped and showed out. The junior class is hosting a golf fundraiser on October 4th. It will be a four V four scramble format and food, beverages and raffles will be taking place. Information and signups can be found on their Instagram page at Westerly HS 2027. Similarly, the class of 2028 is also hosting a Dine to Donate with Ozo, a newly established cafe in the Westerly scene. Located right next to the high school, it is easily accessible for students to get a quick snack after classes. The fundraiser will be on October 2nd. The Bulldog Fall Festival is still growing as more vendors and clubs are joining in. The date is October 25th, taking place on the school's quad, and we are actively seeking additional sponsors or vendors. Feel free to contact me or Ms. Moon for flyers or additional information. Pre-sale tickets will be available at Sunday Fun Day downtown and the beginning of various sports events taking place soon. Last week was also filled with academic experiences for many students. The academic pep rally last Wednesday was a great success. Accompanied by skit and cheerleaders, students assemble during their advisory block to be recognized for their hard work in the classroom. They were also pushed to challenge themselves by senior speaker Abby Emery. Awards included AP Scholars, PSAT scores, perfect attendance, academic club participants and more. Additionally, students in the EMT one and EMT two medical CT program classes went to the EMS Expo at Mohegan Sun. Students immersed themselves with new medical technology while also attending unique lectures taught by field professionals. Yesterday, students in college writing were given the opportunity to visit URI in order to receive additional education from URI literary programs and lessons. This was an extremely valuable resource as many of them are nearing the start of their college careers. On another note, the PSAT testing for freshmen through junior students is approaching on October 8th. The faculty have been preparing them to succeed, performing a practice run-through in today's advisory and giving them helpful tips on all test material. Finally, the homework club has restarted its efforts to provide after-school assistance for any student. With the help of many teachers from varying subjects, students have access to resources to catch up on their work or maybe deepen their understanding on a complicated topic. I would also like to draw attention towards a college preparation meeting for parents of current seniors, which is being held in a school library at 5:30 tomorrow evening. Any parents with questions are encouraged to attend. Finally, the club fair, which also allows students to visit over 40 booths promoting extracurricular activities, will be held on October 8th. Students are encouraged to sign up for any clubs they feel would interest them or benefit them in the long term. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any committee members have any questions or any comments? No. Thank you so much. Great presentation as always. All right. Next item we have here under presentations is transportation. Dr. Garso, I don't know if you want to introduce this one for us?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. If the gentleman want to come to the table, the the next two presentations, we have transportation and technology, both come from school committee requests. There were a couple of requests to hear from the transportation department about the processes for assigning routes and stops and how that decision-making takes place. There was also a memo forwarded to the school committee from the transportation department that highlights a number of points with regards to our fleet and our electric vehicles in particular. And Mr. Hauser is here to talk you through that and answer any questions that you may have. But these gentlemen are here for that purpose. And then Mike Soaker is here also because we had requests to discuss the district website and messaging protocols and apps that are in use and those kinds of things. So the first, we'll start with this transportation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here again to be able to explain. So we staffing is still a difficult issue for us. The largest deficiency is monitors as well. We currently have five monitors, one's on extended medical leave and another one's going to be filling in for an aide that's going to be on an extended medical leave. So that puts us three monitors on all of our runs. Drivers, originally when we were starting out the year, we were looking at the year with 24 drivers. Shortly before the school year started, we had two that had indicated that they were not returning. So we're at 22. What that puts us at is anytime that we have two drivers that call out for the day or that myself, I will be driving. I'm out there on a regular basis this year so far. And then if we have another one, then that takes our dispatcher and puts her out on the road as well. I'm trying to, you know, to actively recruit. I've had some help with getting some information out on our Facebook page. Got a flyer out there for that. I also, that same flyer is listed on our website and I'm trying to to deliver that to the to the near community to try to attract some people in. As far as going with bus stop decisions, one, at the beginning of the year, we have our basis of our runs from the prior year that we use as a, like, just as a foundation. Once we see all the students that have, you know, new pre-K students or fourth graders that have gone to the fifth year, fifth grade and eighth graders that have gone in ninth grade, it changes how the ridership works with the buses. A routing and planning system will do that and provide us what is the most efficient route for those buses to travel. Now, that's a computer looking at a map, so it can't always see every single scenario. And then with us, we rely on our drivers to go out and do a pre-run, a dry run of their route. They drive it, they look at what the stops are, and then they'll advise us if there's anything that needs to be changed with regards to safety or efficiency or, you know, or timing. But so any of those stops, when we, when we decide where, where we're going to put them, we prioritize to try to do it door-side if we can. We try to limit the number of students that cross in front of the bus. We're also obligated by state law, certain speed limits we're not allowed to cross and we have to do a door-side. So those types of rules are what determine which way a bus will go down a street or which, you know, and how we get the bus from one school to the next school. We have 38 minutes on average between the high school and the middle school in the morning. And then it's about 30 minutes for, from the middle school to the elementary schools. This year, we've noticed a lot of kindergarten riders, more than we've had previously. And we have a lot more fifth graders as well. So our ridership on elementary and middle schools are very high. Most of our buses are running between 50 and 60 students on them. A few of them are exceeding that. So that's where, you know, the importance of trying to get monitors, we're going to, you know, try different avenues. We need to get monitors on those buses. Not only are we required to, but we have a variance in place that allows us to operate without monitors as long as we're actively trying to, to hire monitors to fill those positions. So they at least recognize that you can't just invent a person and put them on the, on the bus. That would really help with the efficiencies of the buses because then you don't have drivers having to look in there, look and talk to their students through the rearview mirror, through the student mirror, which takes their, their, their eyes off the road.
So a route, how much differentiation is there one year to the next in terms of when you're routing routes?
That is totally dependent on ridership.
Yeah.
This year, we had, for the most part, the basic routes were the same. We had two or three routes that actually changed considerably. We had to add a bus to State Street that we didn't have before and had to take that away from Springbrook. And just because of the number of, it was another special ed bus at State Street. So the number of special ed students that are at State Street, we ended up having to do a second bus for.
Couple things. First off, like, I don't know how you've done it this year, but it's been really good. Like, you can set your watch to the buses that go by my house, like, and it's been since day one. So like, it's, it's really been impressive. I mean, my kid's bus has been the same time every single day. And there's three buses that go by. So whatever you've done, it's really worked. And Dr. Garso can, I'm sure, verify that I'm usually the one complaining about them, but nobody, I mean, I haven't, I mean, like, even on social media this year, I didn't see anybody chattering, complaining about, like, it's been really good. Really, really good. The only, no, I mean, just because I'm looking for staff at my own place. I don't know how you guys post the positions, but like, un-indeed, I see nothing for our transportation department. So I don't know, I don't know where other places are posted, but I've just, just noted.
It is, it is on indeed.
I don't know why I couldn't find, but.
Usually indeed, once it gets about 30 days old, it's, it's deep in the, in the search. So you have to refresh it. And our HR department's been very good about that. Right now, it's Ashley, but Ashley's been constantly, will try to bump that so it comes to the top again each time that she can.
And then the only other comment I had quickly was just, I know last, was it last year? I think it was last year, we brought about potentially having high school students do some of the monitor runs. I don't know if that's an option, even just look at that again. I know it would only be afternoon, but not sure that's a great idea, but.
So one issue with that, so state law says that the monitor has to be 16 years older or older, which that's fine. However, our policies and the state law require us to do a background check on every individual that's a monitor. Well, 16-year-olds' records are hidden from view, so you don't have a way to, to actually verify any of that. So it puts it in like a catch-22 for that.
Thank you. Like I said, it's been a good year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, how many bus monitors ideally would you have if you were fully staffed?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? We have three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know, is, is the difficulty finding drivers and monitors, is that like statewide or is there something that we could be doing as a district to?
Drivers is definitely statewide. Monitors, we're in a kind of a intricate situation because Rhode Island is the only state that requires you to have a monitor on a regular bus. The other states mainly are just for special education that you either need to have a monitor or an aide on the bus. So our neighboring communities just over the line in Connecticut do not have any monitors. They just have aides on special education. And you're looking at a very small audience of people that would probably be willing to be a monitor because you're looking at somebody that's either a stay-at-home parent that has kids in the school that would like to have a schedule that's similar to theirs. Or you have people that may be retired or have another breadwinner at home to allow them to work on it in a scenario where our monitors are, are making 15, a little over $15 an hour, which you can go to, you know, you can go work at McDonald's for $18 an hour. So, and at McDonald's, they're probably getting 35 or 40 hours where we're only doing 27 to 30.
You know, another thing we have to take in consideration is that, you know, for that $15, even if it was $18, it's a lot of responsibility. You're there, you're responsible for the kids on the bus. And I think the idea of having high school kids do it is understandable, but I don't know if as a parent, I'd be that comfortable having someone 16 or 18 who doesn't have a lot of experience dealing with kids. I mean, some people are naturally good, but I'd be a little nervous about that. So, I mean, what kind of stuff where we have to do this, but the job doesn't offer enough hours and it's a lot of responsibility. And I think that's something that we're going to continually run into. And I think as long as we just try to work as hard as we can and try to keep, you know, an eye out for any possible employee, I think that's all we can really do.
And then, and then mandatory reporters, which is a lot of responsibility on a, on a 16-year-old, 17-year-old, it's a lot of responsibility on anyone.
Thank you, Scott, for coming. I just had a question about the salary difference between aides and monitors. I think that aides make more per hour, but I could be wrong.
Yes, they're about, they're almost 21 and they also are eligible to receive benefits.
So my follow-up question then would be, is it possible to cross-train people to function in both and sort of meet them in the middle salary-wise or?
Well, so an aide, a trained aide can do the job of a monitor. Also, any trained van driver or bus driver can be a monitor as well. So hopefully, the, the process or the way I would try to do it is I want to bring drivers in. One, it frees me up a little bit. Also, as I have a reserve status of drivers, when everybody is there, I can deploy them out as monitors. So they're not just sitting at the bus garage waiting for the, you know, the next thing to happen. But then they can be utilized even though they're, they're here and on the clock, but they can be a monitor as well. But yes, aides can, can serve as a monitor. Right now, we're fully staffed with aides. We have six positions that are line item and we have all six here. But yeah, that would be a nice to be able, even if we were able to grow the aides, they could serve as monitors as well.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I just had two quick questions. So I had somebody who reached out to me that was just concerned about in one of the intersections where they see kids getting picked up just about, you know. of the intersections where they see kids getting picked up, just about, you know, the speed of people driving through there and safety. So do we do anything to coordinate with, like, the town and police about intersections that might be a little more, like, high risk for students crossing the street and different things?
Specifically to an intersection, no. But at any time that a driver, uh, reports an incident where they see a driver either running their reds or, uh, speeding or anything like that, if they have, um, again, this is another state law here in Rhode Island, which as long as they have a description of the vehicle, the time it happened, a license plate, and they report it to the police, the police are supposed to either, uh, serve a warning or an infraction to that vehicle. So it's kind of like a semi sort of deputitation of, of the bus drivers. Uh, future, uh, the, most recently, the state law was changed that the buses are going to be required to have cameras on the outside for the stop arms, uh, starting with any bus, any new bus in twenty twenty-seven, they have to have them on. And by twenty thirty-two, we have to have the entire fleet outfitted with cameras.
Thank you. That's really good to know. Um, and then my second thing, which I'm sure there are things like this that already exist, but do we have anything that goes home to, like, families or that's posted on social about, like, bus safety, only because I, my neighborhood, we get elementary school, middle school, high school, and the number of kids I see walking that, like, got the cell phone down, and I know their kids are going to have their cell phone, and then I'm like, here comes the bus, and the panic that, like, comes through, I think, everybody. Um, so I just don't know if it'd be something that we could put out there again, just to share out to, like, families and students, which they're going to do what they want to do, but just to kind of have that out publicly.
So we haven't done anything social media-wise. Uh, however, I do, uh, the Student Handbook has the bus rules and how they're supposed to operate, uh, how they're supposed to act on the bus. That goes home to them prior to the school year, and they're supposed to sign off that they've viewed it. So just like anything else that we all get, you know? So, um, but yeah, that, um, I could look at, you know, what other avenues to, to get that information out. Um, uh, yes, I would like to get that to the students, um, and, you know, basically show that they're putting not only their own, uh, health or safety at risk, but also the drivers and the rest of our staff, plus the general public. Because if you're taking the distraction, or, you know, causing a discretion, a distraction for a driver, um, you know, there's, there's other things out there. There's people walking down the street, there's, there's other cars, there's, there's plenty of other things, but.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the, uh, the time being able to speak to you tonight. Um, we have in front of you a memo that's, uh, related to the overall performance and some metrics for you about the, uh, the electric school bus fleet in comparison with some of our more standard vehicles that a lot of us are familiar with. Um, so at this point, I'm just going to go through a couple of those, those high-level, you know, data and metrics points, and, uh, we'll field any questions that come up from that. So, um, initially, the electric school bus program came through, uh, a couple different grant funding sources that, you know, came to Westerly. We had, uh, National Grid as a partner, we had Rhode Island D E M, um, and then we had, uh, you know, obviously, the, the school department heard the presentation and voted to, uh, go ahead with the, with the program. So, um, in line with the town comprehensive plan, um, transitions to electric school buses is called out specifically in action item, um, N R G two-point-two-G. So in line with, you know, the overall guidance for, you know, fleet vehicle replacements, uh, moving forward, we wanted to make sure we were sticking with the pre-approved plan. So, um, initially, you know, through this program to date, Westerly has won more than three-point-one million in competitive grants for this program. So really ultimately lessening the, um, the burden to taxpayers in Westerly and making sure that these vehicles are accessible, um, you know, to everybody and, um, so, and keeping a, uh, you know, a newer, um, a newer and safer fleet. So, um, to date, all of the electric school buses that we've procured have been subsidized by either federal or state grants, uh, between forty-five and fifty percent. So overall lessening that, that capital expense. Um, the vehicle that was in the capital request for F Y twenty-seven has a two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-dollar grant from Rhode Island D E M that was, uh, previously awarded to Westerly, um, back in early twenty twenty-four. Um, you know, to make sure that, you know, at the time that we approached the, uh, the committee making that request, we've got subsidies already lined up. So moving forward to some of these other sections, um, addressing some of the concerns and, uh, considerations that have come up, um, you know, through our implementation of these buses. So upfront, we were talking about cost considerations. Um, while we acknowledge, yes, that some of these vehicles are more expensive upfront, the overall lifetime cost of these vehicles is substantially less than the, uh, the existing fleet that we're running. So the operating costs are less, and then the infrastructure investment that we're making is intended to last. So as we're replacing vehicles, we don't intend on having to replace, you know, chargers that go along with it, which is why these subsidies upfront allow us to deploy that, you know, that capital more efficiently. Um, as far as reliability is concerned, we chatted about it last week, but just as a refresher, the, all three of the electric buses that are currently operating are operating within, you know, a reasonable range to what the average gas bus is, uh, performing. So our, you know, our newest bus, which is on a shorter run, is running about eleven-thousand miles a year. And then, uh, one of the two older vehicles is running about fourteen thousand six hundred miles a year. In comparison to the average, uh, fleet data for our gas buses, we're running about thirteen-thousand miles a year. So they're performing as we expected, and they're meeting all the same obligations that our, our gas fleet is making. The next, uh, portion addresses some of the, um, the concerns about some of the weight implications and additional degradation to sites, and then the overall registration components. So going back, all, all of our fleets or all of our vehicles are registered as school buses. Um, so even though they are technically, yes, commercial vehicles, they're under a totally different registration class. So they are considered and registered at the same dollar value as all the other vehicles in the fleet. The, let's see, so just a, a quick note then on the additional degradation of the heavier vehicles. All of our roads are built to accommodate some of our larger vehicles that either run through town or, you know, some of the vehicles that D P W operates, which are significantly heavier than any of the vehicles that are in our fleet currently, including the electric vehicles. Um, section five, we're talking about fueling and energy costs. This is a huge concern, just in general, because it's a newer area that we're, we're working in. So because of a, um, a program that we were with for the first two buses, all of our electric costs for those vehicles are covered by, um, it's a company called Nuvi out of California. They do charge management solutions, and by getting into this pilot with them, we make mitigated all of those, um, electricity costs to date. We still have about six years left on that contract, so we won't be paying any fuel for those vehicles. Additional vehicles that are phased into the fleet, that will be the responsibility of Westerly, but we've been able to get critical data to start forecasting what those costs are without actually incurring those costs directly. So, um, part of why, uh, why going electric makes sense as far as the fueling concerns are, uh, the fueling costs are concerned, rather, um, all of those rate increases, they're, they're stable and they're predictable, and they're announced ahead of time. So we're not at the mercy of volatile fuel costs. Um, we're able to do a little bit more, uh, projections upfront, helps with, uh, long-term budgeting for our operational costs. Um, another concern that was brought up was the range and seasonal performance. So this is, you know, for those that operate electric vehicles and have any experience with them, this is a real concern for when we're getting into weather. So, um, Westerly, because we are one of the first fleets that have electric vehicles, we've been on the forefront of some, um, cold weather, you know, performance preconditioning. So Westerly uses a preconditioning protocol that preheats the batteries and preheats the cabins to make sure that we're not using any of that onboard energy once the vehicle hits the road. So the vehicles are leaving both, you know, the batteries warm and in, in the optimal, you know, conditions, and then the, uh, the cabin is also leaving warm, and the vehicle's leaving with a hundred percent state of charge. So we're maintaining that full range once we, once we get out on the road. Additionally, right, we understand that these, these vehicles are more expensive upfront, which is why we've been doing a lot of the cost-cutting measures that, that we've seen so far. So in, in our learnings, we've implemented some trickle-charging protocols that overall reduce, reduce the peak load at the site. This is, uh, reducing, you know, our, our demand impact, um, at the utility bill by a couple thousand dollars a month. So, you know, we're, we're making steps towards making this program more efficient as we go. Um, you know, and, and part of our initial deployment was enrolling these vehicles in a vehicle-to-grid pilot. Um, we are just in our, finishing up our first full year of doing so, so we're getting our financial data back. But this is just another revenue generation source that not only conditions the batteries and keeps them, you know, in operable condition and, you know, in, um, you know, ready for the, the new school year over the summer, but also adds an additional revenue component, offsetting our, uh, operations costs. So in the appendix to this document, there are a number of graphs that, you know, illustrate some of that quick snapshot data. We've got our average annual miles driven, overall bus fuel efficiency, which, you know, not only are we spending less on fuel by going electric, we're actually, um, significantly more efficient in doing so. So because the nature of the routes is stop and start, you never really get to see the efficiency of a combustion engine running at those higher speeds where they are more efficient. That's where the electric thrives. Um, you know, not only does it not take that much energy to start the vehicle, the momentum takes over, um, but once the vehicle is slowing down, it's using regenerative braking, which is saving on the brake pads, it's saving on overall, uh, wear for the vehicle, and then putting energy back into that battery. So we're preserving range as we go. Um, overall, all of this data is, um, you know, being considered based on actual Westerly operating data and costs incurred to date. So looking at the, uh, bus operating cost per mile, Westerly is saving just about over fifty cents per mile by switching to electric vehicles. Um, and we're working with, you know, with Scott to identify the routes that we can, you know, really put these vehicles on to make sure that they're using the most of their range, so we're getting the best cost benefit, um, overall. The next graph talks about, um, the annual operations and maintenance. We're saving just over, uh, seven thousand dollars on that, um, that comparison. So your, your average electric vehicle, and these are, you know, real, um, real operations costs incurred to date, we're, we're saving considerable money. Um, the next page is a visualization of what that overall lifetime, uh, cost of ownership looks like. So you see pretty early on, the, um, the electric buses end their, uh, their lifecycle by, you know, um, by reaching cost parity with, you know, before that, that five-year mark. So, you know, on average, we're seeing our savings pretty quick within the lifespan of the vehicle. Um, the, the next slide is just a, uh, another representation of that information. And then the biggest part of why, um, we're able to realize such high values for these vehicles when we, um, consider the full lifespan of them, is the body is not really the asset of the, uh, of the vehicle, right? We're paying for essentially a battery pack, which has a much longer lifespan than the actual vehicle does. So at the end of, at the end of the usable life for Westerly, that's about ten, eleven years, um, we are able to resell that battery, either, you know, keep it in-house and repurpose it for battery energy storage at any of our schools if we would like to, or we can sell that to battery recyclers or second life, um, you know, operators that will buy those batteries and do just that, deploy, you know, solar plus storage and make sure that, you know, these, these batteries are used through their full, full lifecycle. And then the, uh, the final page that we have here looks at the holistic life value, inclusive of resale, inclusive of capital cost, and then the entire, um, you know, operating lifecycle of the vehicle. We see that Westerly is saving a considerable amount of money by switching to electric, over a hundred thousand dollars, um, on the conservative end of it. So by continuing this program, we're offering direct savings to the district over the lifetime of these vehicles, and we're, we're bringing in, um, you know, new safe, uh, equipment that, you know, puts Westerly in a position to, um, have a sustainable, modernized fleet. So hopefully this information, you know, and, and an update here just gives some more clarity as to why we've gone electric for, you know, the vehicles that we have, um, and uh, why we'd like to continue doing so. So if there are any questions, happy to answer them.
First question, probably going to know what I'm going to ask. Where's E two?
E two's still up at the dealership. We did call them today, it should be coming back this week.
It was not. It's been since September tenth, and this is, this is my point.
Correct.
It's been since September tenth, the thing has been off the road. Um, just, just that, that's one of my concerns, you've known that. The other one I have, I, I appreciate all this data, but we're projecting the resale value. There's no way to know. I mean, the, the, these things have been in operation, what, four years? We don't know what the price resale value is going to be in six years. It's, it's unknown. This is a projection, but look what's changed in the last six months. What's, what could happen in six years? So I, this number, there's no way to say this number is spot-on, there's just no way. But that, those are my just, my two comments for now. I mean, I understand the reasoning, um, I understand the desire on some of this. I am not against green energy. I mean, drive by my house, I have thirty-five solar panels on the roof. I have a hybrid vehicle myself. If you were sitting here telling me these were hybrid buses, I'd probably jump all over it, because I think they're fantastic. I mean, I look at my, I have a handicap vehicle that weighs a ton, you know, way more than a regular, regular van, and, and I'm getting six hundred miles out of a tank of gas because of the combination. It, it's phenomenal. But I look at these electric things, and, and I did, I, I'm not jumping at this just with an opinion. I, I actually reached out to one of the bus companies within the state that operates school bus transportation, and I asked specifically a couple of reasons, why didn't you bid on Westerly buses? And there was two answers. One of them was, there is way too many unknowns with electric buses. He says, I don't know what we're going to have for staff, what we're going to need to do, and what the expenses are going to be, so I cannot put together an accurate quote. That was direct from this person today when I spoke to him. The other thing was, is they're not designed for sports or field trips because of the limited range, where he was telling me that, and he was speaking about diesel buses, so I, I don't know if it's exactly the same with gas, you guys would know way better than I would. Three to four hundred miles was an average range on a diesel bus is what they're getting, this particular company. So my understanding is we're less than half of that on the electric buses. So again, their concern was, if we're going to go, and our fleet seems to be growing, we're, we're at seven, but what, we've, we've purchased seven, but we don't have seven yet. The ratio's going to start getting thrown off, where where does the money come from for field trips and all of that stuff? Like, there's, there's a lot more to this than we're saving this because we went to electric buses, it's not just that. And, you know, if we've got a charter buses for field trips and sports events, that's an expense, because we can't do it with these. So for me, it's like, it's not that no on electric buses, I'm just not sure they're there yet. I'd love to see the, you come to us and say, now these things have a three or four hundred mile range. Then it's like, okay, now we're talking about something. But we, we just still have so many of the restrictions. Again, it's like, if you were saying hybrid, bingo, damn, I'm, go for it, because they're great. But I just think that we have some limitations still that concern me.
I, I can certainly appreciate that, that last point, which is why we don't ever want to get to a position, at least not now, until you say the technology gets there, and I, I agree. Um, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where, you know, we're putting our operations at risk, which is why Westerly has not gone, you know, for a full electric fleet. We do still see the value in, you know, maintaining a mixed fleet, because we do have those longer operations that we need to maintain. So, you know, long-term, there is planning in place to make sure that there is a sustainable charging network that can actually accommodate this. But for now, we do, we agree, we're not looking to electrify the full fleet. Um, so that, that's just a component there. And with the resale value, I just want to address this quickly. So that's a conservative value, uh, based on the existing market. So that assumes twenty percent of the, um, the actual value of the asset from the point that you purchase it. So that's a very conservative estimate. And then even when we figure in the, uh, the resale value, I, I think we estimated about a little over seventy thousand as the, the resale value, you're still at the end of the life of the vehicle, saving between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty thousand per vehicle. So even if you don't sell the battery at all, and you decide to keep it, you're still saving money on that. So even if it's isolated to the in-town routes where they're really driving those efficiencies, that's where we want to see these vehicles deployed.
I think, I mean, ultimately, a lot of electric vehicles come down to, it's, it's a political thing, it really is, it does become that. And who knows where it will be when it's, when, when that time comes? So that's, I think that's going to drive a big, uh, it'd be a big driving force on what the number is going to be. I mean, I think it's just reality.
Agreed. And I think at one point, when we first started this conversation, we wanted to make sure that, you know, the, the committee, it was a different committee at the time, but still ongoing, we're not going to request that the, the committee allocate funds for, you know, the full value of an electric vehicle unless we're bringing substantial grants to the, to the table. That's, that's been, you know, our, our goal, to try and keep it as close to cost parity right from the outset as we can. So, you know, unless we've got a, uh, a grant available like we do right now for two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars, you know, we don't, we don't want to see, you know, that money returned to the state since it's already been allocated. So it, you know, that's why we're bringing the eighth bus to the table.
Right, regarding what Tim said about field trips, so when do you make the decision that you're going to run a field trip in-house, like, say, going apple picking in North Stoney or kindergarten, and where you're going to send kids to the Museum of Science in Boston? How do you determine? How do you determine that in, you know, can you, you know, because I, you know, I, it's some sporting event to be no problem, you know, especially within the league. But I mean, there are gonna be times where you outsource to a coach company, you know, that's my experience anyway, so.
So ninety percent of the time, we're, we're gonna do that in-house. Um, usually, we have a bidding process for all of our drivers. Uh, it's ordered by seniority. They're always looking for the extra work. Um, that, you know, most field trips for them are maybe an additional five hours for the week. Uh, on the weekends, they get time and a half for that. Uh, so we always try to prioritize that those go out. Um, one of the ways that we support that is for, um, myself to drive, like the afternoon session, or whichever driver's going to take that field trip and send them out of town. Um, back to like with the electric buses, we will send electric buses on field trips if it's nearby and they can be used. So, uh, like Cherahoe or Stonington High School, um, even sometimes Groton, uh, we can send an electric bus back and forth to that even after they do their afternoon run. Uh, primarily, we'll use a gasoline or a diesel bus, uh, to send them out, uh, for long distances. That's where, like, these electric buses, what we utilize them for is mainly in-town, so that our, um, petroleum fleet can be used for the longer, uh, distant trips. Uh, our biggest benefit for the electric buses are in-town. Uh, many other things that, uh, that, uh, in addition to what Rudy has, uh, spelled out is electric buses, if, like in the wintertime, we're rolling them out fully warm as we get the ridership on the, on the vehicle, on the way to the school. You also are, uh, because of the body heat, it helps keep it warmer. An electric bus, you do not have to shut it down. We can leave the heat on while they're at the school. Gas and diesel buses, because we're not allowed to idle, you have to shut them down. And also, if you have buses that do have a little bit of layover, where they're sitting, uh, in most cases, this is over at the middle school in the soccer field, waiting to start their, uh, elementary run, they're sitting, the, the petroleum ones are sitting there and getting cold, where the electric one is sitting there and running and staying warm, and then rolls out warm for the students going to the school. No, we do it ourselves. Yep. This year so far, we only had one instance where we had to do. Yeah, yeah. So we only had one instance this year so far that we had to use the coach bus. And that was for, uh, a, um, football game to situate mass. And it required two buses for the team at one forty-five in the afternoon, and we couldn't provide that many drivers to be able to do that. So we had to do a coach bus to get the team up there. And then the cheerleader, cheerleaders followed at fo- four o'clock with one of our drivers and buses.
Thank you for all the information. Um, I guess my, my biggest question is why we, we voted on this at the last meeting? So in our twenty-six, twenty-seven capital request, we do not have the electric buses that were previously, um, on there. So it's kind of a non-issue. I mean, I appreciate the info, but maybe it'd be best, best represented next year, because at this point, it's kind of a mute point where we've already voted not to have the electric buses. And I'm, uh, that's kind of my overall, I, I mean, it seemed to me at this point, we would just need to, as you mentioned in your transportation memo, that we will just need to notify Rhode Island D E M that we're declining the funds because it's not in our capital request. So, um, I am not in favor of the buses. There's a lot that goes into, I have a lot of questions, and some of it may have to do with our process with the capital requests. I'm a little bit confused on some of the things that have happened in the past after Cindy sent us the dates of the meetings where these were quote-unquote approved. I don't feel like they were. I think, um, in the, well, actually, I'll stick with Rudy for a minute. Now, what, what's your role with Westerly Public Schools Transportation?
I help coordinate these grants and make sure that we're in compliance with the state. And then when necessary, I help, um, coordinate admin duties in the office.
So are you a full-time employee?
I am not.
What's your day job?
I work in clean transportation.
So even though, what, what's the name of the company that you work for?
It's a state agency in Massachusetts.
Which is basically you're not selling electric buses, but you're selling the public on wanting to put electric buses in their fleets and green energy, um, structures across the state.
There is no part of my job that is sales. It is solely information publicly available.
So in Massachusetts, all of the, um, initiatives that are going through your company, the Mass C E C, all of that is funded by a, a trust, a fund in Massachusetts that is funded by fees on the state, on the paid utility bills and electric bills and gas bills of residents of Massachusetts. So in Rhode Island, we don't have, um, that type of fee structure, but the fees that are attached to our electric bills that average about fourteen percent per homeowner are for mandated programs. So even though this isn't mandated, there's money being added to all of everybody's electric bills to subsidize these programs. And the, it, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't, it's like the COVID vaccine. If you have to force people, if you have to pay people to take it, then I, I question the validity of why we're doing it. And I, and I don't understand the big push. There's a lot of questions about the electric buses. And we're given, uh, in my opinion, I mean, it, it's a lot of good information, but we, we could pull information to argue the other side of it. And I feel like we're getting a sales pitch, and I don't understand what, why the push, why the push to do it. I'm just, I don't feel, I, I, I don't understand why it's back on the agenda. We, we just voted on it at the last meeting. So there's, there's really nothing to do. I, I, I'm not understanding the push. And we were also told, now to go to the other side of the whole, um, capital request process, um, Cindy sent us the dates of these meetings where supposedly these buses were approved. I only got to go through one of them because we got that information so late today. But the only time that the electric buses were discussed at that meeting that she referenced, uh, nine twenty-one of, uh, nine twenty of twenty-three, was during the proposed capital request, the financial report. And after about forty minutes, basically the same discussion two years ago about questioning why we're doing it, you know, the cost effective, all the same questions. It was stated, and I'm quoting Cindy, that said, this request does not, these buses that we purchased do not have to be electric. And I said, well, the capital request is very specific. Can we change the wording? And it was said yes, and then the conversation moved on, and the wording was never changed. And the capital request was approved, but at no point following up on that did, was it ever brought back to the school committee to actually approve these buses? And now we're told two years later that that was approving bus four and five. And, and I don't, maybe I'm not understanding the capital request process completely, but we were point-blank told that this was kind of a, a placeholder for these funds, but the buses didn't have to be electric. And now we find out that the electric buses were purchased. So I'm, I'm very confused, and I don't feel like that's, I don't feel like we voted on approving these buses. And there was a lot of discussion about the prioritizing of them. And, and they said, well, it's just a priority that's been placed by the administration, and it's blah, blah, blah. This is part of the, whatever, the whole, um, ongoing vehicle replacement prep plan. But the, then replacing the vehicles was never discussed any further. And it seems like the capital request process approved moving forward with electric bus four and five. And like I said, I didn't get to watch the meeting from twenty-four, where supposedly electric bus six and seven were approved. But we voted last meeting to not go forward with the electric buses. Our capital request was changed this time. That was just submitted to the town manager. So I think at this point, in order to follow through with the vote that we took at the last meeting, we should say that this two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars that was, I guess, already awarded, we don't need it if we're not gonna get those buses. We voted to stick with the gas buses. And if, if in a year, something else comes up that maybe we decide to go forward with, with others, then I guess there's a discussion to be had in a year, but right now, we had already voted no. So, a, and I would like, if there could be, when Cindy comes up or, or whomever is willing to address my question on how this capital, capital request becomes an approval for the buses, because I, I didn't see it that way when I voted.
Uh, thank you. Now, it was mentioned about having hybrids. Is there any kind of hybrid that would be available?
For school buses, there is no hybrid technology at this point, right? We see it in transit vehicles, and it's being piloted very well and, you know, implemented across the country. But at this point, it's either battery electric or, um, combustion engine for school buses.
Right, right. Okay, yes. Uh, I, I, I think we're kind of forgetting why these, uh, grants and stuff are available. It's to reduce the carbon emissions, to, to reduce ours for climate change. I mean, that's the reason, that's why isn't the federal government and state government put those forward? And that hasn't changed, the, the need of climate change especially, and why we're by the ocean is only gonna grow. So it, we're not going to keep buying more gas or diesel engines because it's gonna add to, that we may find something else to do. But right now, the only possible alternative is electric vehicles. And I, I, I think we, we saw it as a pilot. We saw it as a way to, you know, test it out, see how to get, how it works. And we did it at a reduced cost. And that money is available, it's still available. And as, uh, Ms. Wyckall pointed out, we're kind of already paying for it. So we're just not using the money that we're paying for. Uh, and I, I, I think, you know, that's not the best use of money, but as a committee, we voted not to, that's fine. Uh, you know, in terms of, uh, Mr. Killen, hi- his problems with the buses, yes, uh, he's having problems with buses. But I've been on the school community long enough to know that gas priority and diesel buses all had the same issues. There were certain people were not being served because the, the buses were either out of commission due to mechanical problems or just general maintenance. One of the biggest problems we ran into in the past is that we would have buses offline because there was not enough space available to service them. So I mean, it, it's an old issue, but I can understand Mr. Killen's frustration with it. But I, I think, you know, whether we like it or not, we're going forward with electric buses in some form or fashion, whether it's going to be over a longer period, I don't know. Uh, so I, we can talk about it, we can go back and forth, but eventually, we're going to go to an alternative, uh, fuel source for our buses. And for, as we're doing for our vehicles, and we're putting out more electric stations. And that's the way transportation has always worked. You know, they didn't have trains before they started putting down train tracks. You know, same thing, we didn't, we built airports to support the future use of the airplane. I mean, that's the way it is. And, uh, you know, I appreciate the information. Uh, and what we do is we listen to what you have to say, we read, and we try to come to determination. As opposed to voting, I was there for the votes. Those votes actually took place. We did, we did hear about it, we made a decision, and we voted on it.
Um, thank you so much, Rudy. I, um, appreciate your expertise on this. And I, um, respectfully disagree with Ms. Wyckall that we could do a Google search that would refute any of the information that you've provided. Um, frankly, I think, based on your presentation tonight, that the vote that we took at the previous meeting, at least mine, was not based fully in fact.
All right. Um, so Rudy, thank you for everything that you do. I think we just need to say this out loud, you don't receive any additional compensation regardless of your personal work that you're doing, that you are bringing these things to the table for the district.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Um, and then second thing, as much as I would like to think Westerly is cutting edge with these things, I assume we are not the only district in this state or in the region that is doing this. So I'm, are there like neighboring communities that same thing, mixed fleets, that this is happening?
Yep, absolutely. Um, so Block Island was another one of the early adopters with Westerly. Uh, we were the first ones in Rhode Island, but since then, Cumberland Schools has also implemented a fleet, I believe of more than ten vehicles. Um, they partnered with Highland Electric, who's another service provider, essentially doing what we're doing in-house, but enables these vehicles to run efficiently. So there are others, you know, in our region that are doing it.
Thank you. Um, does anybody else have anything on that topic? And I will say, I'm one of the people, I know the question was about why is this back on, on the table for us? I just felt like our last meeting, there wasn't, um, all the facts presented to us to be able to make an informed decision. We did take the vote and we made that decision, and, you know, that decision very well rests with what this committee decided on. But I thought it was important that we did get the information out there, both for us and for the public. Um, and if we have nothing else on that, there was another piece to this, um, was about the bus garage site status and considerations. Um, so Scott, I don't know if you could talk us through, um, that piece, sir?
So at the bus garage, uh, the building itself is, is very old and was not designed for, uh, being used as bus fleet, um, operations. The parking lot, uh, which I do not know exactly when the last time it was paved, but is, was full of potholes, uh, throughout the, the entire property. Uh, the Wesley, uh, Public Works came by and tried to, you know, did fill them to the best of their, their capability. Uh, it is better than it was. However, um, my fear would be any significant rain, or even once we get into colder climate, uh, colder time, uh, the frost heaves, all these are just gonna uproot, they're gonna become trip hazards again for our staff. Uh, it'll cau- it can cause damage to the vehicles driving in and out. Uh, and also, what that does is it opens up, um, the, the property for any runoff from any of the vehicles, fuels, oils, uh, just plain dirt on, when, when it rains and washes off the vehicles, and it will, uh, leach through the ground and, um, and, and down through the ground, where if we have a, um, solid pavement, newer pavement, and it's graded properly, uh, all the runoff can be directed to the sanitary sewers, where it would then go through the water system like, um, like it should be.
I was just gonna suggest you go before the town council and or the planning board. They, there's some kind of issue they're talking about with possible contamination with the aquifer. I haven't looked at any of it myself, to be honest, but, um, it, it's a legitimate concern. But, you know, if, if there's a simpler solution, obviously, just paving, if paving the, uh, the lot is gonna solve the problem, go tell them that, we're happy to, to take the easiest route through this. You know, other than having to move the fleet, which we don't know if we even have a place to do it, how much it would cost, and whatever else, so.
Yeah, you have.
They definitely need to get the same thing.
I mean, I listened to that town's coun- town council meeting, and actually, Dr. Garso sent us some more information. It sounds like they've been talking about this for months. It seems ridiculous. But I did hear that one of the concerns, again, I, it seemed to focus around the electric bus, which I think is absolutely ridiculous. I, I'm not at all worried about a lithium leak. I mean, I don't know exact dates, but I would say it's what, forty years we've been on that property or something like that? I mean, buses leak stuff all the time. And it's, this has not been an issue. But again, I think I agree with Mr. Jackson. I mean, you two should be the two in front of the town council. I mean, you have first responder experience. Rudy, you are the one that can talk about the electric bus. I mean, the way the concern was brought up that a lithium leak was gonna damage our water source versus anything, I mean, it was, it just seems absolutely ridiculous to me. I, my bigger concern is, is how this ended up to them, and we didn't know anything about it. It was like, what is going on here? So I don't understand how it happened, but yeah, I'm with Joe. Please, go explain it to him, because this is nuts.
Has any department, like Public Works or Fire Department, had any comment on any issue going on at the garage?
No.
No. So, and, and no, no other town body or board has reached out to you with concerns about that?
No. And I've actually reached out to the local area of fire departments because I told them that, you know, informed them that we had some newer electric buses that were going to be added to the fleet so that we can do a refresher training with them so that they're at least knowledgeable about the vehicles and any emergency shutdown procedures. So if there were an event on the road or at the charging stations, that they have the information to be able to mitigate that.
Thank you.
All right, I think you two are out of a hot seat finally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, guys. And next up, we'll invite Mike up.
Hey, everyone, I just got it set up on the laptop real quick.
Well, Michael gets himself set up again. There were, there were requests again about the website to discuss that and the messaging and how that happens from teachers to parents and, and back and forth. As Michael discussed, there, there are a lot of considerations around ADA and the website, particularly in response to an OCR request we got last, not, not so much a request, a complaint, that some of our content is not accessible. But Mike can speak more to that as he goes through his presentation. So there are limitations to what, what we can put on the website and how. And there are also privacy concerns, and he manages those extremely well. But like with the buses and everything else, informed decision making requires accurate information. So we figured if Mike comes in and explains it to you, that might be helpful.
You know how to work that thing, Mike?
I hope so. I hope so at this point. Let me just see if I can move a few things around so that it doesn't impede us. Thank you for having me. I have provided a paper copy of the slide deck. The attempt is to be comprehensive, but not also spend an hour and a half talking about the complexities about ADA compliance. I'm going to fight this, this bar the whole time. All right. So what's, what's in this presentation? I wanted to describe who the Office of Civil Rights is, the contacts of the Federal Department of Education. I want to talk about the complaints that we received from the OCR department. I also want to speak about what is ADA in the context of websites and web access versus that for other disabilities? I want to talk about a standard that is aligned with the ADA, and it's a web contact accessibility guidelines, or also called WACG. I want to speak about the process we're going on every single day when we get requests to put things on the website and also address things that are still not permissible for us to add to the website. Then I wanted to explain where we are today and probably some of the reasons why I'm here doing a presentation. Then I want to finish off with a summary and a follow-up about the messaging apps. All right. So the Office of Civil Rights enforces several of the federal laws. Of the most important ones for us today is Title II of the American, of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which prohibits discrimination in programmer activities for any institution that receives funding from the Department of Education. And what it boils down to is that we have to provide equal access to everyone, regardless of their ability, on any online programmer website. The breadth of the OCR Office of Civil Rights is literally anyone who receives funding, and that's inclusive of all schools, all universities, even libraries and museums. Now, how does someone contact the Office of Civil Rights? They simply go onto their webpage, they fill out a form. They then identify what they believe they are being discriminated by. The context of this form is that anyone in the world can file an OCR complaint against us because we receive federal funding from the Department of Education. So either the person themselves has felt or feels discriminated, or they're doing it on behalf of another feeling discriminated. So this doesn't necessarily, this complaint didn't come from someone in the community, in the state, in the region. It could have been Alaska, Puerto Rico, or someone outside the country. With that said, I want to show you what we received in September of 2023. On the left, and this is public knowledge, and I can share you the actual link to this presentation if you want to look it up. But on the left is a letter that Dr. Garso received from the Office of Civil Rights in September of 2023. And it highlighted three concerns. First concern is that importing graphics, texts, or links are missing alternative text, which therefore imposes a barrier on people with disabilities. The second concern that we received was documents provided in a portable document format, AKA PDF, was inaccessible with people with vision disabilities. The third concern that they brought up was that the foreground and background colors of important contact lacked sufficient contrast, again imposing a barrier on someone. So I'm going to go through these as examples so you actually, you know, can see what this means. So, concern one, importing graphics, images, or links are missing meaningful text. When individuals who have normal vision look at an image, we know what it is. So for example, if you were to look at this image, we know that there's kids walking onto us. Maybe we can assume it's fall as well. People with disabilities, either being blind, vision impaired, without having alternative text, they have no context what's happening. They also don't know if it's significant to the point of where you're trying to display on the webpage. Let's say this image is something important about electric buses or gas, about entry into a vehicle for safety training. If you don't provide alternative text, someone with limited vision or blind has no clue if that's important. And it's our responsibility to ensure that they have the information to understand the context of that image. So what do we do really in the background? So we add something called alternative text. And that simply means we actually literally write out what the image is about. We have to do that on every single image, every single infographic, every single video, every single caption. In addition, just providing text is not enough. When you ever went to a website and you clicked on a link, and in the URL, this is a bunch of gibberish and then .jp, whatever, you ask, that link itself actually has to have meaning to it. So in this, in this example, this image both has the alternative text in addition to the fact the link says students entering school box, school bus dot image. So that's concern one. Concern two, documents provided in a PDF format were inaccessible to people with vision disabilities. Now, for decades or longer, we have always provided a PDF of our school boundary. Their concern was that people with disabilities, specifically with vision or blind, didn't know what that even looked like. There was no means for them to understand the significance of the colors and the progression of the calendar. So the other thing I want to highlight is that by default, PDFs and Word documents are not ADA compliant. Everything needs to be scanned manually and also possibly recreated. So this is a case, this one was explicitly called out, and Rose helped us with this, is that anything we put on our website, we have to provide equal alternative means. So you can't say, click here to contact Mike Soikin and explain it to you. You have to provide an equal document that allows them to understand in the same capacity as anyone else. So what we did was, I'm going to pull up these links. Right? So for people with non-disabilities, we'll see this, we'll see the colors, we can move our eyes around, right? But someone who's using a screen reader, who is blind, has no clue what's happening on this page. So we're legally required to offer an equal alternative. So what we did with Rose's help is create this list view. This list view has information in the background on the document and the context on this page, where they can actually go through individually and move through, and they'll be read to them. So this is an equal alternative to what we provide to people who can normally see. And you're going to see this, this theme continuing. So the third concern we received was foreground and background colors of important contact lack sufficient contrast. On this image, left is bad, right is good. You would hate to read something on a webpage that was black background and blue. But what do we normally do in our content? We change colors around, we want it to be evasive, we use color as significance. The problem with that is someone with a disability, vision, blind, or another means, has no way of knowing that that's significant, that that background's black or not, nor will they be able to see the blue and the black. So everything we post, in addition to the first two concerns, we have to make sure contrast is there. So I spoke about the contrast, the significance of this. So what you'll see on our webpage is that there's no, like, we're very limited on flyers and infographics. We're so used to like, here's the flu clinic, here's the hiring thing, post it, go. In order for us to stay compliant, and the Office of Civil Rights does do automatic scanning of our website, we have to supply accompanying text paragraphs overlay that can, that convey that information. The other competing problem is that you just can't slap a table. So let's say you had a flu clinic, you put everything in columns down. That's not immediately an equitable alternative for someone with a disability. All right. So now, as I continue to fight the bar, I want to talk about ADA and compliance to the website, kind of what we've already been doing. Right? ADA is proactive accessibility planning, where, and I left this on purpose, insert programmer service. It's proactive planning for anything that we do as an organization, where we make it accessible before there's a need for it. You build ramps not because Mike Soikin needs tomorrow, you build ramps because someone might need it. And that's the intention of ADA. Web accessibility is really for all, but it's designed and developing so people with disabilities can use them. But it really goes a step further. More specifically, and I copied from one of these sources, is that all people can perceive, understand, navigate, and interact with the web and actually contribute to be a citizen. If you combine these two together, the whole intention is just equal access for all. And providing this alternative means might actually make it easier for you to use the page versus the other one. So now I want to get to the true nitty gritty. These are just some of the highlights, but I want to talk about something called the web contact accessibility guidelines. These guidelines are not necessarily stipulated by the Department of Education that uses a reference to ensure that you are compliant. What they do is they explain how to make web contact more accessible, accessible for people with disabilities. It provides four guidelines that I will get into further, but they are foreseeable, operatable, well operative, understandable, and robust. And then they even go further, and they provide levels of conformance, where there's level A, two As, three As. And this is where I want to go further in, because this is everything we have to consider when someone asks us to post on our website. Like the guideline of foreseeable, provide text alternatives for not text content. That was exactly where the concern number one was. In the same tenant, we need to create content that can be presented in different ways, including by assistive technology, without losing meaning, which is why we have the alternative list view for this, for the calendar. We also need to make it easier for users to see and hear. Staying in these guidelines, we, we have to make sure that anything a normal person can do, that someone who only uses a keyboard can also do it. And keyboard, keyboard only, with or without assistive technology. We have to make sure it's easier to use inputs other than the keyboard. So you have keyboard, we have a mouse, you might have a joystick, you might have a screen reader, you might have a Braille device, you might even do something with your mouth, the other extremities to assume this content. Then also, we also supposed to help users navigate and find content. We need to make text readable, understandable. I bring up the infographics again, you might want something with all these pretty colors, but someone who has difficulty seeing or is blind, the significance is lost. But if that color being read is significant, we need to call that out in an alternative. Right? So text is readable, it's understandable. We need content to appear and operate in predictable ways. Have you ever tried to fill out a PDF and you click tab? Instead of going down, it just shoots around. So anyone experienced that? Well, that's unpredictable, right? It's how annoying is that you have to go, I gotta go click now, right? So imagine someone who can't use a mouse, who needs a screen reader, or is blind, or using Braille. It needs to be predictable in a logical format. We also need to attempt and do, it's help people avoid mistakes or be the correct mistakes. And the last, the last tenant is robust and maximize compatibility with current and future user, uh, user tools. That is really on our, our website provider, who has overlays that assist work between the two versus a task that us ourselves have to take on. All right. So I described OCR, I described the complaint, I described ADA in the context of website and accessibility. I briefly explained the guidelines that at minimum we have to follow. Now I want to talk about what we do. And we have to do this with all content. So I just did these illustrative examples, right? A user has to be able to use tab and tab only to navigate your entire sites and understand what they're reading, what they're seeing, what the intention of it. They also have to have the ability to know where on the page they are. If, the example is PDF, you click tab and it shoots back up the top, they're, they're, they lost that order again. Right? And then bring this back up, are there any instances where color alone distinguishes the object or state, in this case importance? Which was OCR's complaint number three. Staying in these illustrative categories, envision, does keyboard navigation follow logical predictable order? And that's my example with PDFs. Are all images and graphics labeled with meaningful text, associated captions, or adjoining descriptions? That was OCR complaint number one. The other thing that we have to test is for magnification. So you may have gone to our website on your iPhone, iPad, maybe your fridge, your TV, whatever. This site's got a scale, and you still have to understand the content. You can't just make it super small and then you can't click anything. Nor can you make it super big and you can't find anything. So like, that's got to be continuously a idea we have to play with. And then we continue with navigation. You have to do everything on a keyboard while also providing alternative means for anyone else who doesn't use a keyboard. We have to provide links that mean something, it can't be gobbledygook. And they want us to avoid tables. We're so used to using tables, they just make logical sense. But if you're blind, vision impaired, and not in a logical order, that's not highlighted, you'll just be lost in this circle. And I just want to demonstrate what like this, what this looks like. So a person on my team, Brandy Lampier, is in charge of most of the ADA compliance. And in this example, right, this, this is what they mean by a meaningful title. Like WHS, could be surmised as the high school, WesterlyPS.org is district. Four students, it's in the four student tab. And what's the purpose? Online program studies. Like every link actually has to make sense, because if you're blind, you might not know where the context of the link came from. So if you have to follow back and forth, you want to know you went from that tab to this purpose. So if you have to follow back and forth, you want to know you went from that tab to this purpose. Furthermore, I gotta see if I can how quickly I can zoom. Like this, this art webpage has to be responsive to everything that zooms in and out from whatever resolution. So you can still follow logical context. The next piece is that you have to be able to tab through every, all the content. So someone who is limited vision or blind could simply tab. It also visually highlights where you are. But it's also logical because it follows progressively after the other. And the other context is how do we make it easier? You provide a search, you provide a way for a means to give it to you. And I don't want to like labor this much further, but like in that same one, there's still other stuff we have to consider. Right? Like we talked about like our webpage has to work on every browser, on every phone, every hardware. We talked about the keyboard access, you have to be able to use the keyboard and keyboard only on all content period. Logical progression, you would like things to follow a logical progression. We may be frustrated when it doesn't and we'll get around it. Someone with a disability will struggle and struggle hard. We spoke about the visual indicator, the little blocks around the other thing. We talked about the alternative test, like they have to be descriptive, they have to mean something. You can't just slap something up and say kids walking. They, they literally want you to describe like what they're actually doing walking to. What is the scenery? Is there significance to this? Doesn't even matter. It doesn't matter why it's there or can it be displayed a different way? We talked about the well named links. Color alone, you can't just put red everywhere because you don't know if that's significant or not. Right? Color contrast, you don't want a, a purple background and then some weird color that you can never see. I can bring up the example again. And not to continue going further, but we, we have to worry about buttons and heading structure. There's a reason why you don't see many videos on a webpage, right? Those all go to YouTube. Um, magnification I already demonstrated. And there's much, much more for PDFs and videos. And with that said, there are still some things that we can't post as they are natively. So our district operates on Google. You may see, so I'm in a Google slide, right? You see Google Docs, you see Drive. These products aren't natively ADA compliant. A lot of people in these documents have pictures because people without vision, with people who have no vision problems, if you just pulled an image off of something and slapped it in, you could explain the context and they can just read it. The other thing that we like to do is make tables because they make sense graphically to us. Tables have, actually require a lot of background massaging for it to follow that logical order that highlights that has the right context and has meaningful information. I'll still beat up infographics because we love these, the, the bulldog flyer, all these flyers has got everything I need. Well, we have to remain ADA compliant. So it's nice to have these, these tables, these charts, these arrows. But when we make these equal alternatives, we might have to lose those features, therefore making the content less visually appealing or the logical pictorial progression that we just know in our mind to do and follow for columns. This is a big one. Linking to sites who themselves are not ADA compliant. We hold the responsibility to provide a equal alter, alternative means for anything we post on our webpage. Any link we put on, we have to ensure at minimum that they're ADA or we provide the means for that person on our website of the equal opportunity to that information. And then lastly, again, documents, by default, they're not ADA compliant. So like when we do post documents, we literally have to scrutinize everything. And when it ends up coming to be, we have to recreate that work every time. So this now leads into why you guys actually asked me here today. Right? Delayed content, right? It feels like the webpage has nothing. Right? It's because everything we want to add, people ask us to add, ask to share, we literally have to go through this entire process to make sure that we're ADA compliant. And sometimes that requires us to literally remake the content every single time. So this lead or has led to a variety of communication methods bypassing our webpage. Right? You have Canva, you have Padlet, Smore, Adobe Express. You guys can probably express to me how many other ways and things you're getting this stuff through, what platforms. Because we need to remain ADA compliant and this massive human capital cost, like there are no more teacher webpages. Right? So what has this led to? This has led to an increase of variety of communication tools. And this speaks to your class dojos, your reminds, your Google classrooms, your email, your name, something else. This part I want to add on, um, there are events missing from our calendar. With the context of the society we're living in today, it may not be prudent for us to post Dunn's quarters, grade four is going to miss the aquarium on this day. Right? And if you start thinking, well, how much less can we put there? You lose the meaning of it. What if you just see DCS like, okay, you got, you don't know location, grade, if you're a parent or if school community looking, but it doesn't say who, what, where. It doesn't mean anything. And the last part I'll bring up on this is that I am cognizant and aware that like we are missing information on our webpage. Right? There is a balance between providing what we can, but what the risk that we open ourselves up by putting everything in anything. Um, Verizon, funny enough, does this massive cybersecurity audit every year. They've been doing it for like a decade. So like they're the number one source for this information. And last year alone, 60% of all cyber breaches were having human element in them, AKA they clicked on an email. Right? We also have advice from state and federal agencies to not put everyone in anything on our webpage because it opens it up for another issue. If you know that Mike Soikin is a role language teacher who went to that place at that time, I can now send you a well crafted email saying you owe this for that for then. Then this opens up the issue down the line. So we do provide alternative means, right? If we were to put every person on the webpage, there's a, there is human capital cost because we have teachers that move buildings, have multiple purposes, have changed titles, move around during the school and in the summer. And we can't always have the immediate knowledge to update that person's day and time or location. So there will always be a delay of that. For the most part, district staff, front office staff, social supports relatively in the same place, they don't move as much. Right? So with that, think about my summer screen. My summary. So this is where I, I want to talk about like areas of growth and research because I don't have all the solutions for you guys today, right? But I do want to offer like some suggestions, right? I do think there needs to be a strengthening of information sharing between the student clubs or the activities in the buildings, sending pertinent relative information. Like we can't post everything, but there's still some context that we may not know, but as the community or as the school committee or someone else actually needs to know. But if we don't get it in a timely manner, we can't even make that decision process. Right? The other thing is that like, I would advocate and will gladly work whoever wants to, right? Make some type of unified communication protocol. Maybe we want to talk about a policy, but some type of guidance for staff, but also for our community and how communication happens and where context should come from with the intention of alleviating confusion and or frustration that has been heard felt. And while our current Power School student information system could send and can send emails and texts, there hasn't been enough necessarily awareness or training to let them all aware. Everyone's used to comfort and convenience. They pick up that, that remind app and I'm away to town. I don't have to think about it anymore. I'm already preparing class today. Right? The only thing I want to highlight is that there's no two-way communication within our products. Now, I will always stress that email is the tried and true method. Right? We, we always want instant communication. We want the ability that I know it's in their inbox and they could reply to me. But email has been around for decades and coming from more of a compliance or business risk perspective because we have to think about edge cases, not the normal person doing the normal things. We have to think about that, that situation we don't want to think about, that we need immediate access to that content. And we don't want to be delayed by an app or a vendor or by some longevity of records collection that we have to sift through and find it. And guarantee you, give me an email, we can pull with the entire conversation of it. So the last thing is that I always solicit feedback. Like, please tell me, talk to me, email me, comment, invite me to school committee. I'm more than happy. I got other suits, right? Um, I don't wear them often. I only wear them here. So with that, I'll leave it for questions.
Well, first thank you for what you do. I mean, holy cow, listening to this, like wow, what you have to go through for the website. Um, I, I did spend some time today just perusing the website and it has improved quite a bit. I mean, it's, it's definitely noticeable. Um, I still really would like to see a way to have the contact information there. I don't understand why other districts do it and we don't, but I, I hear what you're saying because I mean, I, I just hopped on Cherahoe's today and it's all.
Arrow South.
It's all. Yep. Um, as far as the communication, yeah, I, I agree. I think there should be a protocol or something because I don't like all the, I mean, I like the idea of an app. I don't like that everybody gets to choose their own because I mean, there's parents. Uh, I mean, I've spoken that one teacher is using remind, the next one's using class dojo. I can't get like, who's one, what? It's annoying. Um, you know, but there's, there's definitely things that can be done. A, a, a parent in my neighborhood has students in Cherahoe and they use Power School as well. And one of the things that she noted, which I don't see that we use, and I don't know if that's a district choice, if it's a teacher choice, whatnot, is at the bottom there under school bulletin, like on your dashboard, there could be announcements. And I know that they utilize that and the other district.
That feature exists.
Okay.
At this point, it's like a district, non-district, it's a building based decision.
Okay.
So like there's, I think with a protocol or some structure, like we can figure out that that's where you would put that information.
It would just, I mean, it's, it's like tomorrow's the early release day. There's nowhere that that was shout out, shout out. And I mean, I'll be the first one to admit, I forget about them all the time.
Right.
You know, it's like crap tomorrow's that, but like Kelly at the high school sent out an email yesterday. But the other schools didn't.
Correct.
So there's just, there's, I know I can put it in the calendar, but if it was in, if it was one of those texts or remind things, I can click on it and it puts it in my calendar. It's just a way, it just seems like there's gotta be a way to streamline that because again, there's been no district wide announcement. Tomorrow's an early release day. It's not on the website, like the splash page you do, I, I'm assuming it's you or your team, like something big is coming up, bam, it's in your face.
Normally only significant events, like a phone outage or.
Bingo.
Right?
It's, it's just stuff like that. Like I, I feel like we've got to have a way to have a singular communication method. It's good to know because I didn't know that Power School was a one-way thing. That, that's, that's good to know.
So they're, they're, they could, if they know or wanted to based off comfort or other reasons, send a text, email or call. But again, if you have a population using that feature, you still have remind, you still have dojo, you still have emails, you still have personal Facebook groups. Right? There's PTOs on top of that, right? Like without some type of common protocol or whatever thing we want to create here, the expectation isn't set. So I'm going to do it at convenience because Mike can't stop me. Right? At the end of the day.
Yeah, it was confusing because I did get an email from my son's third grade teacher yesterday just about homework. And it was through Power School, but it doesn't come from the teacher. So it doesn't jump, it came just as Westerly Public School. So it, it's confusing. Yeah, it's just.
They like school messenger.
Yeah, it was very weird. I was like, what is this? And you know, so it would just, it would, I, I mean, obviously I, I don't have the answer and it sounds like, oh my God, I don't know how you do all of this, but you know, it's like.
A lot of the work is on Brandy.
Yep.
Um, so I keep talking about human capital costs because she's not just our, our department admin assistant. She does Chromebooks, she does calls, she does some help within finance as well and on top of all this stuff. So like.
Is there any reimbursement? I mean, Cindy would probably know too, like on ADA something like Medicaid, something that can help. I mean, this is massive what he has to do. Like I had no idea. And I mean, it's like, wow. You know, it.
I may bring up a budget season.
Okay. All right. I'm quiet now.
Thank you very much. That was very impressive as always with what you tell us and inform us and teach us. Um, I would just kind of second the Power School using that to its fullest capacity. Maybe just in association with the emailing, which back and forth. Um, but because primarily because of the concerns that you raised with privacy and security. You have to have a student in the district, you have to have a login and everything to get on there. So that would be, seem to be the safest place to put information about out of school field trips. And it could be that even better that it's school specific.
Yes. I mean, the bulletin is something live, it's in the base product. Um, we're only on our second year. The first year I will tell you has been a ride. Right? So now we're starting that the first year over again with a little bit more knowledge. Right? So we're still pulling out these features, the understanding, the wish, the wants, the ideas, right? Um, some schools are better at using the bulletin. And others just don't because they might have some other method. Maybe it's a newsletter, maybe it's a smore, maybe it's a remind, maybe it's an email. Right? So that's why I go back to like figuring out what that unified path is. Protocol or something else is a district decision with district support and stakeholders. So it's not just Mike Soikin saying email. Right? Um, so we have that understanding. And then maybe one day we do morph into a true unified app that's additional to it, that has other capabilities. But I don't want to stretch to paying more money if we can use the things that already exist and the bulletin and the ability to text and email from Power Schools there. You'll still come over as school messenger. Um, but we can figure out a way I, to attempt to make some type of templates, look into, um, or a way that they could put their email.
Thank you, Mike. This was amazing. Um, I agree with Ms. Wykow about the, you know, the protection that Power School offers as far as privacy and security. And one of my favorite features of that platform is the little email icon. So like all my daughter's teachers, I just click on it and it, I can communicate. So I wonder whether it would be possible to have information about staff also included in that app. Like teachers, yes, but also support staff or, you know, guidance or people who are interacting with your student.
On your phone.
I do.
Can you see if you have something called staff directory? Cause technically all our staff are listed in Power School.
Oh.
But I don't know off the top of my head if that's staff only view or parents can see that listing because we put all our staff's names, basic titles and phone numbers, not that we would send those to you, but email addresses. Because that's our district communication tool for closures or for emergencies.
Okay.
So that exists in there.
Okay.
I figured I asked if you guys had the app.
Yeah. Um, and then just one more thing that I thought of. Um, is there like a template for like, if someone has content that they'd like to see on the website? Is there like a standard template that would carry that content request through a process that would sort of translate it into something that was ADA compliant?
The, we can always make templates, but we want to convey the information in the means that we want to. So you start battling the conformity of this context with the visual display that you wanted to see. So like, at the end of the day, we still have to manually audit it because we have to provide that equal alternative period.
Okay.
So like we could have some type of flyer, but we still need to add other stuff. And some flyers are better than others. So sometimes we just provide the equal alternative period, right? Cause it just works and it makes logical sense. So I won't tell you that it's not a struggle, right? If someone made something like that, it'd probably be a billion dollars or more, right? Um, because there's so much context to the, those WCAG stuff that like, there's actually 400 more pages. Right? Like you have these guidelines, but every single functionality on a webpage has that level AA. Right? So like, so that's why I wanted to address like the delayed stuff there, the things feeling like it's missing or it's incomplete. Because either we're not getting it or the content requires so much effort to do that it has to be delayed to when we have time, which then makes it not prompt. And we can't make the assumption that it's important to you, to the school or the districts.
Yeah. Thank you. I will just also say thank you for everything that you do and listening to that was, I, do you sleep?
Some days.
Um, yeah, but we.
Um, yeah, but we appreciate everything that you do and thank you so much for coming in today.
Thank you, guys.
And that will take us to our first open forum. And this one is on school committee agenda items only. And, um, it is five-minute time limit. Is there anybody who wishes to address the school committee tonight? From our full audience here. All right, seeing none, so we will move on to our assistant superintendent's report.
Good evening. So yesterday afternoon, we kicked off our teacher mentor program as part of the new contract. Uh, we have 13 mentors for our 13 new teachers. Uh, the purpose of the mentoring is to provide guidance, support and professional growth opportunities, so they can build confidence, strengthen their practice and positively impact students. Uh, I'm also pleased to report that we successfully completed the first administration of the STAR assessments across K through eight, which replaced AmesWeb as our universal screener. This marks an important step forward in strengthening our approach in progress monitoring, progress monitoring instructional decision-making. Their early literacy, reading and math screeners are nationally normed, computer adaptive and provide school-based teams, school-based teams three times a year, a thermometer check on student progress toward grade level standards. And as part of this work, which took many, many hours, um, I want to give a shout out to Kristi Miller, our data manager, who is behind the scenes and, um, essentially building what needs to happen for us to administer these assessments um, with our representative from STAR and Renaissance. So, uh, shout out to her, um, and she's part of Mike's team as well. So that's it. Thank you.
None. Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Angela.
I just had a quick question, Steve. Um, AmesWeb was twice a year, right?
Uh, three times.
Oh, it was three times as well?
Yep.
Okay, so this doesn't, this isn't adding an additional assessment?
No.
Oh, okay.
It just replaced.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. And next up, we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, on Saturday, the 25th, I had the pleasure, the distinct pleasure of, um, attending the Rhode Island Department of Education Teacher Celebration at Water Fire, where, uh, Trish Pymer was again honored and was, was able to light, uh, the fire herself with, with one of the torches. And, uh, it was a great night and a, and a big celebration. So again, congratulations to her. Uh, to build on what Brady said earlier, I wanted to also, uh, recognize a very, very successful academic pep rally at the high school last week, last Wednesday morning. And, um, our sincere thanks to the members of the committee who were able to join us. It was a great morning, um, and very well done by the high school there. In your package tonight and further on in the agenda, we do have a update to the Wesley Public Schools Library Media Policy. This policy has been in place for a number of years, but there have been some revisions made for tonight that reflect, uh, what is contained in the Right to Read Act that was signed into law this summer. And primarily they're about, um, really codifying who may file requests for reconsideration of materials, what those, uh, the constituency, constituency of those, um, or composition, I should say, of those, um, review committees. It names very specifically the, the folks who should be on there. And likewise, it codifies who can file a claim of undue censorship. If, if, uh, a community member or a parent believes that the district has overstepped and is, is imposing undue censorship, there's a process for that as well. That was not in our previous policy. So those things are, uh, addressed in the update. They come directly from the state law. And again, that's in your packet for, for later discussion this evening. Uh, other than that, I have nothing else for my report and thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions, comments? All right. I try. I sensed it. All right, so now we'll have Cindy come up for our financial report.
Hello, so this evening I only have, I have four budget transfer requests. Um, the first two are for multi-language learner online testing. The first one at the middle school, a transfer from other dues and fees to testing of $640. And then as well as Springbrook for $800 from Supply Materials General to testing. Um, this online testing had not been included in the budget, so these transfers will, will correct that. The next two are related to curriculum training. Um, the, at the middle school, from Supply Materials Math, $7,000 to Training Services. And at the high school, from Supplies, Dues and Fees and Furniture to Training Services for $7,000. So this is for the Alex Math Curriculum Trainer. Um, in fiscal year 25, this was grant-funded. However, we do not have the grant funds for this year and these, these transfers.
Does anyone have any questions for Cindy? All right, so I will seek a motion to approve items nine, A, one through four.
Some of, second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all members in favor? Any opposed, seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, so next we have our consent agenda here. So I will seek a motion to approve, um, items 10, A, B and C on our consent agenda. We have a motion in a second, all members in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, thank you. And next we have under new business, our first reading of the Library and Media Department Policy 6130 update. Dr. Garso, did you have anything you wanted to introduce this with or?
I actually did.
Okay.
No, I mean, I made, I said what I needed to say, but I'll say it again. This, this, um, update is in response to the changes in the state law that was signed into, into, um, effect this summer. They, um, it, it provides further guidance on the processes for requesting reconsideration of materials. Uh, also the processes for requesting, um, um, inquiry into undue censorship by, um, the school committee or other bodies. It updates the, uh, review committees that would serve on, um, any reconsideration teams. And, um, that's, that's basically the substantive changes in here. We, we, we've had this policy in place for a number of years, um, but there were some tweaks that needed to be made in response to recent changes in the law.
And I know this was a first read, but does anybody have, um, any questions or anything on this document? No. Right, so I will seek a motion to approve the Library and Media Department Policy 6130 and waive, um, any additional readings.
Second.
Excuse me. This is the first reading?
Yeah.
So if you want to approve it tonight, you can. But the first action is to waive any further readings.
Okay.
And then approve it as presented.
All right. So I will seek a motion to waive any additional readings on policy 6130.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Go ahead.
I guess, uh, I, I just kind of want to say my piece on this. I didn't support the Freedom to Read Act, um, and I don't support adding it into our policy. I understand that it was voted into state law. What this law actually does is, is apply the same standards of adults serving public library to school libraries. And I feel like it's important for me to express my opinion that we're not talking about banning books, but we're talking about age-appropriate content. And in the, in the, in the realm of, of a school library, there is a potential for there to be books there that certain parents wouldn't think were age-appropriate for their children. And what the Freedom to Read Act does is it, is it indemnifies it, it makes it impossible to sue anybody if, if a parent felt that way. And in terms of the, um, review process, it, it limits who can bring a review of a book to, to light. So I don't, I personally don't support this. Um, and I just kind of wanted to make that known.
I will just say in response to that, I, I think something we have to keep in mind too is that, you know, we do have professionals within our district who, um, I think we have a lot of confidence in that they're going to make good choices and decisions for what is appropriate. And then there is always the option of if a family does feel very strongly about their child not having access to something, that I know we have the avenues in place to make that known and to make sure that happens between the family and the, um, and the school district. So, um, but I do respect that, that's your opinion on it. But I just want to make sure that we remember that these are our professionals, that we're entrusting them to do this. And I hope that it's in partnership with, you know, our students, our families and administration, that, um, families' needs are met, but also that students have access to a rich, robust library collection. Um, so if there is nothing else, we have a motion in a second on waiving additional readings. And we can poll vote on that. Um, so Angela, if you want to vote first.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, so that passes. So now we will, um, I will need a motion to accept, uh, the Library and Media Department Policy 6130 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, and I'll poll vote again.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 No.
All right, that most, motion passes five to two. Thank you. Next we have correspondence. Is there anybody who has anything for correspondence? Um, I did receive something, which was a part of my question that I asked, um, of Scott earlier, just about like intersections and, you know, student safety, um, which I'll forward to Dr. Garso and to Scott just to take a look at. Um, but I think he answered my question well. Um, and outside of that, I didn't have anything specifically.
I think we all received, I think, uh, an email from the, I don't know how to pronounce it. You, I think you know the people at the Women's, Womanex Project. Did you receive that?
I got something personally, but I don't know if I got it.
Came to my school committee address and I think it went to some others on the school committee, asking us to take a survey, asking if we support, um, basically abortion rights and LGBTQIA and kind of, I'll say, did you receive this, Dr. Garso?
No.
I'm gonna forward it to you. It was a little unnerving, actually. It was a little kind of like, we're gonna out you if you don't support what we believe in. And I feel like we should somehow remove them from soliciting us on the school committee. So I'll forward that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And I just wanted to, I'm not gonna respond to it and I'm not gonna take the survey. So they can keep sending me as many questions and they say they'll try multiple times and then if not, they'll out you for not responding.
All right. Anybody else? Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, I just wanted to note that I received the same email, but to my personal email, not through the school. So, yeah, I don't know if they think they're targeting people, but.
Yeah, and I haven't looked through, I know I got it personally, but I didn't look through my school stuff yet. Um, but thank you for sharing that and obviously, yes.
Um, just for full transparency, I did receive the same email and it's the Women Project.
I did, I received it actually both personally and on my school committee one. What's interesting is I clicked on the link and it already had an answer for me, but I didn't fill anything out, so I'm not really sure how that worked, but it was there.
All right. I think, okay. So do we have anything for committee and liaison reports?
So, uh, Monday we had the Special Ed Local Advisory Committee meeting. Um, both myself and Ms., uh, both attended. Um, it was very well-attended, a lot of new faces. Um, and we had a presentation by Ruth from the Olean Center, who did a fantastic job. Um, and it was just, I don't know, there was a lot of parental involvement. Christina shared a ton of resources and information. It was just, it was really encouraging to see a lot of new faces. And I mean, even people that don't have their students in the district that want to do bring their student into the district, which was really encouraging. So it was a great meeting.
Yep. On, uh, October 29th, uh, the Finance Committee will be holding a meeting at, uh, Backcock Hall.
From the school, yeah, from the school building sub, from the school building subcommittee, uh, we will be having a ribbon cutting for Dunn's Corners and Springbook on October 16th. You will receive emails with more information on the exact times. October 16.
Um, I just wanted to share on behalf of the Health and Wellness Subcommittee, which hasn't met yet, um, for this school year, but, um, the Mental Health Resource Center has added peer, uh, counseling. Um, I believe it's happening once a month, but I will share out more details, uh, when I have them at our next meeting.
All right, and next here, we have future agenda items. Any requests for future agenda items? Mike?
I think we should have a member from the planning board come to us and discuss what, what, what made them think about the garage and what documents they had to support, what they wanted to do.
Nope. All right, so we will go to our next open forum, which this one is open for non-agenda items. Um, and speakers are given three minutes. Anybody who wishes to address the committee? Great. Seeing none, so I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all members in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good night. Thank you.